Oh, great for having the Father with you coming forward again, Lord, and give you thanks. Father, thank the Lord for keeping us here in your grace and mercy. Father, we meet and date all that our eyes and our vision, Lord, put on more focus, Marbury County, and our citizens. Let it work together, Lord, and make this a better place to work, live, and play. Let it be in the Son of Jesus' name, amen.
First, approval of get out.
Mr. Chairman, I'm glad you're here. I'm ready to meet.
All the members are out here. Right, our first public hearing, our first public hearing ordered at seven fifty five. Orders to adopt the annual budget to make for a recent walk again in fiscal year beginning July one, twenty seventeen, and June thirty, twenty eighteen. Mr. Roan.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Steve, I can, uh, I guess I can give you my notes from the later on when you consider the ordinance, if, and, uh, there's any comments, some public, they can make comments. Uh, as we've gone through the budget several times and gone through the work session we had, uh, the, the copy you have in front of you that's being presented, um, represents a total expense budget of eleven point one million dollars, almost eleven two, and, um, requires reserve usage of four hundred thousand dollars down from one point one million dollars. It also depends on a, uh, three-mill tax increase and a, uh, forty-dollar per dwelling solid waste fee. Uh, last year, as y'all know, we, uh, we had a budget that included one point one million dollars from our reserve. In order to balance the budget, if we would've tried to do that with those numbers, it would've required eighteen tax meals to balance the budget. So, in preparing the budget, staff and I worked very hard to focus on cuts, things we could have cut, also to try to depend less on property tax and more on user fees, and then also, you know, ultimately reduce, uh, the use of the reserve fund. As a result of the staff's efforts, we were able to cut three hundred and five thousand dollars in just expenses. We also, um, looked at fees, uh, and, and different things where users could pay for the service they're using, delinquent tax being the best example, and that generated four hundred and five thousand dollars in revenue that wasn't dependent on, on property taxes. So, all of that money together equals twelve tax meals that we either found through cuts or from revenue, uh, enhancement through fees. Of course, as you know, we're faced with two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in new costs for this next year that were mandated, state retirement being the biggest one. Also, there were a number of budget requests and needs presented to council. Uh, council, in our work, in the work session, focused on the essential things, which were, um, the correct, uh, employees with salaries below minimum, and also provide a cost of living increase to all those other employees so that our, our salary levels don't get out of whack, even the ones that are not adjusted, you need to keep them, you know, compliant. Also, council funded a, uh, work crew supervisor, which will help clean up the county with the litter situation, and also do, uh, public building maintenance and things that'll save money ultimately. Uh, in order to, to, to meet all of these needs, again, uh, the proposed budget includes a three-mill tax increase, but it's important to understand what these three mills make up, or made up of. The first, uh, point four mill is from reassessment, and, and I, I think I sent you all, uh, how you can see that, but I'll try to explain it to the public. All of the property in the county was revalued over the last five years, and as a result of that, values went down. Now, that doesn't mean that everybody, individual tax bill went down, because everyone sitting here in the room probably had something that went up, but when you add 'em all together, the value went down. So, the mills that had been assessed or levied by the county, um, brought in less money, and so therefore you adjust it. It could've gone the other way. Propri- in, in any other, in, in most other counties, it would've gone the other way. Property typically does not go down in value, but unfortunately, where we live, it does. So, that's that part. The other, uh, there's one point seven mills that, uh, is to pay for the state retirement contribution that's been mandated that the county, uh, all the counties contribute, and that's two percent of, uh, of, uh, employees, that's the share that we pay in for their retirement. Um, so that's that part. And then there's also allowed millage increases for things like, uh, the fact we ran a deficit last year, or inflation and that sort of thing. And when you start subtracting these explanations from three mills, the balance of that, the little bit left, would come from the debt, the deficit recovery. I know I made it complicated. So, point four mills is reassessment, one point seven is retirement, and point nine mills is to recover the deficit from last year. That's the breakdown in what's presented. Uh, council would vote in a separate resolution to actually specify where exactly that comes from before the tax bills are going out, but those three mills are in the budget to be approved, to be considered for approval tonight. And the final thing is a solid waste fee. Uh, this was, was proposed to council and is included in the budget. This would add a forty dollar per dwelling in the areas of the county that aren't in towns or cities. It'd only be one time a year, and it would be used to, um, create more solid waste enforcement, to clean up the county, which we all see a need for, to make our convenience centers we have more accessible to the public and easier, uh, to be used, hopefully to reduce littering, uh, and it also would make it to where, um, basic private garbage, or, you know, an individual's garbage would be dumped for free, not commercial, not big heavy construction projects, but you take a bag of trash there, they'll take it. Um, so that also is in play there, and it should bring in, um, about three hundred thousand dollars, and it would effectively reduce the reserve usage by that amount as well. So, all of those things in play end up with four hundred thousand dollars come out of reserve instead of one point one million dollars, and a three-mill tax increase, and then the solid waste fee. That's it in a nutshell.
Can you come in for council? You from the public? All right. We call public hearing for one seventy five. Our public order, now, open, uh, public order at seven fifty six, orders to approve the capital improvement plan for Marbury County for the period of fiscal year twenty eighteen through twenty twenty-two. Mr. Roan.
Mr. Chairman, we prepare this every year. It's a five-year, um, plan. It's just a guideline only for things that, uh, staff feels we'll need to spend capital-wise, you know, as far as, uh, equipment or major building repairs, that sort of thing. It has al- it has always been fairly general, so it's not real specific. I think as we go forward, it'll become more and more specific. Um, but we do ask that you, uh, later on, approve it for our guideline, staff-wise, as we, you know, execute the budget.
You come in for council? You from the public? All right. We got public hearings for one seventy-six, and we'll open up orders for seven, for public hearings for one seventy-seven, orders provided by the insurance of said, uh, nineteen one million dollar general obligation bond of Marbury County State Fund to prescribe the purposes for which the proceeds of said bond shall be expended, provided for the payment of said bond and other matters related thereto.
Um, this is, uh, another part of our budget presentation this year, as, as we, uh, explained in our workshop. The county has a millage dedicated to pay for debt on money that was borrowed in a bond ten years ago to make major repairs to the buildings in the county, and with the interest rates being lower, we were able to refinance that and use that tax mill as to, um, take that back up to the original amount, in other words, borrow the difference. What we were careful to do in the presentation to you is, we didn't extend the term of that, so, you know, the twenty-year note, and so what we're asking for is to get, get some back out of it with the, after the refinance, but not extend that note past ten more years. So, we don't, we're not increasing tax millage, and we're not extending the term of it. So, we didn't buy a car on thirty-six months, ask you for the equity out of it, and extend it to seventy-two months. This will allow us to generate between seven hundred and fifty and thousand dollars and a million dollars to make these repairs you heard me talk about, to courthouse roof, to, uh, all sorts of things like that, and it'll also, um, reduce some of the expenditures out of budget, so that helps us reduce the millage, or, or keep the millage from going up more than it had to.
Can you come in, council? Can you put a post? All right, we have a close, public hearing for one seventy-seven. Up next, we have approval minutes for the main, uh, twenty seventeen budget work session. If you had a chance to look at that, if you wish, you'll approve that. Would you gladly, if we have a second? Mr. Meechey, on a favor, raise your right hand?
I'm saying.
He was asked, all right, have a look. All right, there we had the main, uh, uh, council meeting for twenty seventeen. We have a motion for that. Have a second?
Sir.
On a favor, raise your right hand?
Stand there.
All right. Up next, old business. Uh, order at seventy-five, orders to adopt the annual budget to make for a recent walk again in fiscal year beginning July one, twenty seventeen, and June thirty, twenty eighteen, third reading. Mr. Mooney, you need?
No, I mean, I've, I've explained it pretty thoroughly. If there are any questions, I can try to answer them.
All right. We have a motion, we have a second?
So.
All right. On a favor, raise your right hand? Did everybody, on a mature, done, okay. Get his in and out. All right. Uh, then, next one at seventy-six, orders to approve the capital improvement plan for Marbury County for the period fiscal year twenty eighteen through twenty twenty-two, third reading. Uh, Mr. Mooney, can you kind of give that proof? Do, all right, we have a motion, Mr. Wood. Second, Mr. Meechey, on a favor, raise your right hand? All right, you seen that? Uh, next, one at seventy-seven, orders to provide, on a mature, this other one nineteen one million dollar general obligation bond of Marbury County State Fund to prescribe the purposes for which the proceeds, said bond shall be expended, provided for the payment of said bond and other matters related thereto. This is the third reading, and Mr. Mooney explained that in the, uh, public hearing on Saturday. If you have a motion, I'm Mr. Black. Uh, would you gladly, second? On a favor, raise your right hand? All right, you seen that? Order at seventy-eight, orders to Marbury County State Fund to amend and amend and rest the stated agreement for the development of the joint county industrial and business park by among Marbury County, Dillon County State Fund, and Marion County State Fund, so as to the laws of the park and modified distribution of park revenues and the benefit of insurance by Dillon County with certain special source revenue bonds and other matters related thereto for, this is the second reading, Mr. Mooney.
Uh, Chairman, Steve, this is, uh, actually a good thing here, and this is, uh, as I was talking with a citizen who was here a minute ago about the budget, concerns about the budget, this is revenue that will find its way to the county. Um, twenty years ago, the Ca- Marbury County Council had enough foresight to get involved in a project with Dillon and Marion County, and subsequently Harbor Freight was located in that park. Uh, we're not supposed to say Harbor Freight, but it is Harbor Freight, and they're getting ready to expand big time, and so eventually, it'll take a year or so, that money will find its way back to, as tax money. So, this is a, uh, an ordinance that approves the incentives and different things that are being done to make that deal happen, and this is second reading, so there will be, you know, another opportunity to discuss it.
You have, you have a motion? Mr. Black, on a, please, there's a second. On a favor, raise your right hand? You seen that? All right, I want to do business, four, ordered seventy-nine, an order to provide for the annual sum of waste fees, first reading, Mr. Mooney.
Uh, this is by title only. Uh, our attorney is, is hard at work in getting this done, and we appreciate that. Um, obviously, this is something new, so we want to make sure we have it correct, have it done correctly, and so, uh, we ask you to approve it by title only, and we'll have, uh, more discussion at the second reading.
So, Mr. Woods? Second. Mr. Meechey, on a favor, raise your right hand? You seen that? All right, resolution, code six, one seventy-two, resolution is seven, uh, fiscal year twenty eighteen, waste hour auto loan to slip the title red amount of three thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. Mr. Mooney?
This is a sort of a routine thing we do every year. Uh, there's no match, so, you know, free money, benefits to county, so we ask that you approve it.
Is money in the general fund, or, so do you think it's put in the line?
It's kept in a special line, I believe. Yeah, it's not in the general fund, yeah.
All right. All right, Mr. Plato, blue, Mr. Meechey, second. On a favor, raise your right hand? You seen that? Resolution oh six, one seventy-three, resolution is seven, fiscal year twenty eighteen, usual rate in amount of seventeen thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
It's a similar, similar deal, no match?
No match, all right. We have a motion, Mr. Meechey? We have a second?
Sir.
Mr. Woods? On a favor, raise your right hand? You seen that? All right, resolution oh six, one seventy-four, resolution approved, the budget admitted to the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen budget as requested by Marbury County Government Board.
I'm gonna let the finance director speak to this.
Uh, we will see you have a listening packet of emails, and this budget amendment is for the year ending June thirty, twenty seventeen, and it's a routine hearing procedure. I imply that our auditors, in order to compensate for the departments that have some budget shortfalls, and in preparing the new fiscal year budget, we've identified these areas and legislated accordingly to have a more accurate distribution.
All right. Any questions? All right, we definitely have a motion? All right, Mr. Black? Mr. Plato, second? On a favor, raise your right hand? All right, thank you. Uh, resolution oh six, one seventy-five, the resolution authorized submissions of an application by Marbury County to the Sycamore Emergency Management Office for fiscal year twenty seventeen, local emergency management performance grant, an operation is set, ready for award.
This is a routine annual thing we do, and we're authorizing, we're, we're asking for authorization to apply for it again, and, um, uh, the estimated award for this is about fifty-eight thousand dollars, and, uh, and we've, we've, you know, we've used this in planning for our budget, so it's very important to us.
Is there a match to that?
I don't think there's a match to it. Is there any?
There's no match, okay.
I may go to the seven, resolution oh six, one seventy-five.
Mr. Woods, second? Mr. O. Hold up, on a favor, raise your right hand? You seen that? All right, from all the boards and commissions, uh, we had so many packets, uh, we, we sent the, opened up these packets, so we had this, uh, we had this, uh, Patty's, Kimmy's, for the library board, and then we had, can we do this together, Mr. Meechey?
You can do them together if you want to, all together.
The library board is yours from now on.
Yeah, the library board is, this was, was, was my, a part of mine.
Okay, so you need to make different motions based on?
Okay. All right, so the one that stood up, is, is, we're filling, um, my district seat for the library board, for Miss Patty's, Dr. Kimmy?
Seven.
All right, all right, we have a motion, we have a second? All right. On a favor, raise your right hand? All right, thank you. Now, next, we had Mr. Kim Stone, of course, we put him on the, uh, the late authority board, and we had, we took Mr. Cephalos, correct?
He had resigned, yeah.
Kim resigned, and so this was just a field, that vacant, that vacant seat, it was going back, and, uh, Kim, uh, Stone expressed interest of, of serving on that. All right, Mr. Black, Mr. Meechey, on a favor, raise your right hand? Do you have any more, or support information? All right, I think you have a thing, and said we'll have some information for the next meeting, we had too much going on, now trying to, uh, work, get the rest of them, uh, tied up and, uh, cleaned up, be ready to go in the next meeting. So, up next, uh, finance, representation board.
Mr. Chairman, the council, going a month of net expenditure for eighty-five percent of the budget, and, uh, for eighty-four percent for this year, um, and not much change since the last one, um, the decision, all right, for the revenue expense, continuing to trend consistently for this fiscal year as they have in prior years. Per Association of Counties website, the House and Senate Budget Conference has completed their work on the fiscal year seventeen eighteen budget. The conference committee increased the local government fund base funding level by ten million dollars and adopted the House proposal for funding government employer pension increases. This recreation will pay for the full two percent for state government employer increases and one percent of the local government employers increase. Um, together, this will represent forty-four million dollar recurring increase for local government, and the summary is more than seven percent of the state's general fund recurring increase that has gone to county government this year. Any questions?
With the increase, what was it, what would be a dollar amount? Do you have a dollar amount to come back to the county? As a shortfall from previous years?
Well, we still have shortfall costs from previous years. I thought, um, I just did a little quick calculation, approximately seventy thousand, if you did seven percent of what we get now.
My, my understanding was the ten million dollars, they made non-recurring money, recurring money, it wasn't an increase. I don't know, we'll believe it when we see it.
Yeah, I could follow up and then do some more research on it.
Yes, sir, we, we, I mean, I was, I seen different rumors, I didn't know exactly what that number would be, so, there was one of the things they said, and there was a decrease from about, from Marbury County, this was last year, this year, even for, I mean, I don't remember the exact number, but there was a decrease from actual rumors on the chocolate, and I'd say, and so just, uh, that, any more questions? All right, that's it. All right, Mr. Woods?
Uh, I have a pretty semester report. We have, uh, as we always do, we have employee service anniversaries, and we recognize those with five or more years of service. This year, we have Jackie Baldwin at thirteen years, Keith Bingham at eight years, Cindy Dever at six years, Johnny Fair at twelve years, Adam Ford at six years, Tanya Harmon at twelve years, Edward Odom at eleven years, Charles Peterton at ten years, and Deborah Welder at seventeen years. You know, as, as you've been seeing before, we have the, uh, As- Association of County Conference on July third to August second, um, there'll be classes offered during that time, if you, uh, need any more information on that, and of course, Ms. Blundell can help you with that. Excuse me a second. I'm all budgeted out. Uh, as far as economic development goes, I, I've mentioned the Tri-County Park and the Harbor Freight expansion, that's, uh, that's working well, uh, for us. One thing of note is that, uh, there's two hundred and fifty more acres left down there that we're in that partnership with, uh, I think my report's a little bit out of kilter here with the head in there, but, um, we want to be sure that, uh, we're working to be sure that we have all, everything set up with that arrangement with Marbury, Dillon, and Marion, to be able to promote that other two hundred and fifty acres, and hopefully have success there. Um, also, as far as our stuff here in the county, we've been working to, um, try to improve the product we have to offer. What I mean by that is, when we get a request from a prospective industry, they often want to see the land we have, or building, or that sort of thing, and the things we have to offer here right now are below what other people have in surrounding counties. We don't have a building to offer, and our industrial property is, uh, you know, not close to the interstate, it's kind of landlocked, but the, the park we have on thirty-eight has all the infrastructure there, and we have land still available, so we need to try to make it the best we can, and so we've been spending some time to clean up out there and, uh, make it look better, and cut, and signage, and that sort of thing, and that's important. Uh, we've also done some work at the Borro site, we haven't spent money, but we've, uh, cleared some, we've spent money, but we've used, you know, existing labor and equipment to clear the land. I have a company that is, uh, uh, more than likely want to lease the warehouse part of that, a local company, so we'll have a use for that, and there'll be at least some money coming in, and somebody, more importantly, somebody there on site, you know, so things don't, we, we fix them up, then they go down, we fix them up, they go down. Um, I met this week with the Jeff McKay, the executive director at NISA, about, uh, what our relationship with NISA and what they can do for us and us for them, and that sort of thing. I'm gonna follow up with the meeting over there with their staff. Um, they're, you know, they have a lot to offer us, you know, they have more resources, um, and so they're, they can be, they can assist us in economic development, but I think it's important to understand, uh, what each of us do and what our roles are there. As far as administration, uh, administrators report, uh, you know, recreation, you know, a lot of, this is the time of year where you hear a lot of stuff about recreation, because everybody's playing ball, and everybody's gets mad about something or another, and, um, so I've been schooled this year, my phone, people figured out where my office is and what the phone number is, and, uh, but recreation's something that touches a lot of people in the county, and probably one of our more visible departments, and there is room for improvement, like there isn't anything, and so, uh, we're working to, to do us a couple of things. First of all, to improve the facilities we have, and the, if you go down Hospital Hill over here, you'll see the old ball field they cleared, uh, up against the woods, and we gained about forty feet, you know, where we just weren't cutting. Little things like that we're working on, and we'll get around, and everybody's got parks in their area, we'll, we'll get around to everybody's. The other thing is trying to put together some sort of questionnaire, like you see sometimes you get on an email, or you can, an in-depth questionnaire, to try to get input from the coaches and the players and the parents on the good and the bad, so we can work on the bad and capitalize on the good. Uh, I think this is very important, and this is gonna be a focus I have here in the coming months. Uh, I made a note here about a PAR grant, if you remember, a couple of years ago, uh, we put in for a grant for the Blenheim Gym, and that amount was reduced somewhat, uh, by the, by Representative Hennington to use for another project. Typically, those things roll off, and you lose the money after two or three years, and I just want to make sure that if she wasn't able to arrange whatever to make the money flow through the city, or whatever, that we could get it, instead of it going back to the state. Well, that, that got everybody's attention, and I had a letter from Senator Malloy, and a phone call from Senator Malloy, and a visit from Mr. Hennington. Um, she is very actively still trying to fund that project at Walker Park, I think Mayor Harf is helping her, trying to run it through the city, so there isn't any money for us to get, but I did want to just make sure, and I wrote it in that way, um, you know, hey, don't let it go back, we'd like to have it. Um, there is money, there's more money there, it comes about every three years, so we can apply for more stuff, and we'll do that. Solid waste enforcement, I made a note here that, um, Keith Williams participated in a, a steaming operation in Darlington, where they set up and watched a, an intersection to catch people littering out the window, and, and he says it was very interesting, they had, um, Sheriff's Deputy, and they had a Natural Resources Officer, and they had, you know, Keith's counterpart over there, and they set up and they would watch, and then they would call, and somebody would run and, and get the person, or charge them. The, the interesting thing that I didn't really think about was, when they did it, they, they would get people, and they would run them through the computer, and some of them had warrants on other things, like drugs and all, so it kind of, it was almost like a roadblock, but you were accomplishing something there. So, Keith's interested in trying to do this here, and he's gonna be trying to be with Sheriff, or Sheriff's Department, and different people to do that. Those are the kind of things that we really are gonna have to do here, people will need to realize that you can't just throw trash out the window, and apparently, a lot of people don't seem to understand that. Um, so look for that coming. And then finally, I just want to thank Ainsley and all the finance staff, and everybody, every department head, for their assistance in preparing the budget, and it was a little bit different approach, I have a, had a little bit different approach, and I think at first they were wondering what's going on, they might still be wondering that, but, um, we really took a real deep dive, and looked at every detail, and turned every stone over to look for money or ways to cut. I think it was a good, um, a good process, because some folks that hadn't been involved got to see how it worked and understand why people are asking, why I would ask certain questions, and it'll help us as we, just, the day-to-day business, as questions come about, it won't just be like I'm just trying to, you know, come up with something to ask, so I appreciate Ainsley and anybody else that's helped with that. Are there any questions I could answer?
Yeah, I have a couple for you. Um, let's back up to, to parting, and then we go back to the fact of living money inspired, because I understood that, uh, that money expires in the very first of May, and, uh, this is June thirteenth, which to me, that means that money's gone. But I went to, uh, a workshop meeting that, uh, City Municipal had yesterday, and what I found out yesterday, and that was a deal made, which I call a backdoor deal made, between the mayor, our house representative, Mr. Patricia Hennington, and Dr. Tiller, and I'm saying it that way, because the way he expressed it, and the way some of the council members asked him about who did you talk to, right, and they came up with this here plan, that they want the city to get the money to run through to Walker Park from the school board, to take our money and do this here, and give it to them, and the school board at return is gonna turn around, and they're gonna upkeep. The park will see, there's a lot of things wrong with that. One thing, she's elected official, this is for a twenty-year plan, so there's no guarantee that she's gonna be twenty, be there twenty years to take money from us to give to them. There's no guarantee that Dr. Tiller's gonna be here to do this here, anything, but none of this is in writing, and this is what came up, because they asked the attorney what register he have of this meeting. He said he contacted their attorney, school attorney, and the school attorney never got back with him, so all this is hearsay, but the mayor insists that this- But the mayor insists that this is the deal that's going to be done because this is what they agreed to. But this our twenty thousand dollars that's involved in this here, if we haven't received any other money at all, right? So, no matter how you get that fixed, the way I count, we're talking about sixty-eight thousand dollars that we haven't received because I made thirty-first pass. They might have changed some rules because they knew that. The deal is that it's a backdoor deal. The attorneys have not met to discuss this at all. And how can you do anything with money and don't discuss where the money's coming from or what's being done? Major problem with that, right? We need to look at where our money's going, you know, if it's not coming to us. We've never had a House representative in the history of Marlborough County to take money from the county to give to somebody else for their own purpose. Now, what you doing is you're talking about Walker's Park, a name. What you taking this money away from the children of the whole county? I mean, not just one section of one group, the entire county. That what you doing is you depriving the kids for what they need. At this point right now, this year, we haven't received any more money. So, I'm looking at sixty-eight thousand dollars that we do not have to put in our parks to support our kids and let them play soccer, do anything that they need to do, right? And all this is, is political, is simply of a political deal. And that our mayor has hooked up the House representative along with Dr. Tiller to get this here pushed through. This, this back, backdoor deals need to stop, this is fact. See, something can make it up, you know, dislike nobody, this is real. And I, I know stuff that we can know about, but they don't even contact the county and say, we're going to take this money or we're going to give any more money or we're going to do anything. It's like, later for you, we just take this and do what we want to do. For them to turn around and say, well, we're going to run, now we're going to run it through. They took it a year, three days, hour. Well, the school system can't take the money, but we get the city to take the money and we're running through to the school system that still owns property. Hey, there's something maybe that needs to be done. There's nothing legally done, then everybody needs to know exactly what the mayor, House representative, and Dr. Tiller is doing with the taxpayers' money. I mean, I, I would sit here and take a whole bunch of, I know that's something else. Here we got a representative on the city sitting there voting for this, that marks for the mayor. Now, people can tell me they want to tell, tell me about law and that, but you work for me and you vote against me? Choice is pretty good, you know, for telling them all, but maybe that's just me. So, something with that is wrong, there's a lot of things wrong here and we need to get to the bottom of it. But anytime you go behind closed doors, you come back to push something, eh. There's a lot of things we need to look into and nobody must say this here, but it's wrong. Everything about this being done is definitely wrong. Can't, nobody find, no right in it except for a political push that's off of this. You want to play a little games? Let's play, uh, 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 let's go to election move and we play them there. Don't take it out on the children and that's big problem. All the children in Marlborough County is going to suffer for what they doing politically. Sixteen thousand dollars that we can use for our, for our kids to play ball and everything else. I'd like for you to look into this here, I mean, you, you know, I want you to find out and get to the bottom of it and see exactly what's going on. And you'll find that the attorneys have never talked. That's the school board attorney and the city, but the school attorney, they haven't, they haven't wrote one letter, but one way from the city to the school, but they never responded, so how do you take our money? That's the problem I got for right now. And I'll speak one way, but we'll go down to somebody else. That's the problem I got right now.
Well, can I respond? Yeah, I wrote this letter a while back and, and I had been told that it was dead. So, I was just trying to get twenty thousand dollars. I don't know whether the letter stirred it all up or what, because I was surprised when you came in today and said that, that, uh, the city had had a big work session or whatever about it. We did, we originally applied for sixty-seven thousand dollars. We did get forty-seven thousand of the original grant, it, it was only the twenties, so we did get money. And, you know, they did, uh, in my conversations with Senator Malloy and Representative Hennington, say that there was other money coming and we should apply for it. So, um, I understand your concern and I'll do whatever I have to do.
My concern is that as long as all of this been here, May thirty-first was the deadline. And I think everybody's counsel that had been here for a while, the nineteen-two, I don't know this here, but all of us know, May thirty-first was the deadline. Now, all of a sudden, May thirty-first hit the deadline no more. Now, who changed the law? And if the law was changed, then why didn't we give you the copy of the law? Why didn't somebody have the decency to come to us and say, hey, we're going to take this money? Can we take this money if you want to use this money for something? Not happening. But do you want to be courtesy, fine, then what about the law itself? NISA still let the law change, if the law changed, and I'm saying it, because you make backdoor deals, you're not concerned about the law. Because if you're concerned about the law, you make a, a backdoor deal.
Do we, do we usually get the part money, I was every year or something?
I mean, it's usually a three-year allotment, takes three years to roll off and we've always put in and we've, you know, Anthony remembers and he was doing it, I mean, you typically got something.
Every year?
Almost every year.
Every year?
I think it was every year.
You think, well, you get money, you never know exactly, you got requests for the thousand, you might not get it. It all had the, um, discretion of the delegation, you know, of others, not only Marlborough County putting the money, but other areas putting the money also. So, it's, it's up to the delegation of what you get. And, uh, what do we get, you know, look at some other folks. But, um, you get off to, you might get off, out of there with dent and high rein, uh, for all and what we request we got. You know, but then things were different, things were plentiful. Uh, there were nothing for, there were nothing for us to get, um, thirty, forty thousand dollars and get off of. But as things change, government change, people in the position of the money change. You know, uh, now they, the delegation disperse, like it's up here, like it's on the dog, like it's on the drum, like it's on the fire, you know, it's in here, it's in there. Well, I mean, but, uh, but, uh, but see, there's, there's, there's same thing now that just because you're forty-seven thousand, they kind of get forty-seven thousand, he's not got that.
The houses have got to take in that money for their own personal use.
Well, I think it's still elaborate, I was, so, uh, let me just speak to the facts that I know. And, you know, it is a political issue.
Right, very true.
I, I, you know, that's not me, not me anymore anyway. There is a certain amount now, I'm not sure I wasn't passed, it is allocated to Marlborough County.
Right.
That within the boundaries of Marlborough County. I don't mean who's going to get it. It does say that it has to go to someone who has operated a recreation program in the last twelve months. And I think that's what's made it to where the school couldn't take it because they don't operate, you know, they already have stuff in the schools, so they couldn't take the money. The city, I guess, could be qualified because they maybe do something. That's my understanding of it. The money that, that we have a thing, we got last week from, um, the state that said how much money is there? The twenty thousand is the old money that's getting ready to go away. We thought it went away and then there's more money. So, you can apply for all of it, you know, or whatever, like, like Councilman Woods is saying, you may not get it. But, uh, you know, it is their discretion what they spend it for. And of course, they're elected officials, so if someone's not happy with that, they can hold them accountable for that. But there are rules in there and, um, you know, I can give you all a copy of it. And I think it's probably a good idea so you all can see it for yourself and I'm not in it. But, um, I think it's in our best interest to make sure we apply for it every time it comes up. And, um, my experience has been that every legislator I ever dealt with, either as on county council or since I'm not on county council, always wants to have a say in where it goes, but in the, typically in the past, it pretty much would go where you want it, you know, to some degree. So, it's got to go to somebody operating a recreation, a local government operating a recreation program. So, that's definitely us. And probably why we got it a lot, because we were really the only one and maybe the city.
Well, the city not have recreation boards, team play though.
Well, I don't have to argue that with them.
They have one there.
So, so, we, we, you know, and, and.
Well, I want to talk, we'll have time, when we talk to you first, talk to everybody.
No, no, I, I, I think, uh, it was a little bit history, obviously. See, because years ago, the county and city ran our park, so there was one industry where the whole park, our county, it didn't split. So, then, you know, that would be, we would get our money because we take care of our park and our county. It was city and county split, you know, their citizens, well, they, I might want to fence, I might want this, you know, so that's, um, where they get opportunity to channel in and also prepare. You know, they might have the activity, but they think I have a park, they think I do about swing and games, eh? You know, the park, they have to be out there. So, you know, I think that was some of the, um, before the division come in, you know, they might be like we do. Like we do, but then they can say, I don't got to do gym sex, I didn't park, I want to do that.
I think the best thing to do is let me get you all a copy of the rules.
I'd like, I'd like to.
Just work on the rules.
This thing is something that's not going to go away. I mean, without a doubt. And as I said about backdoor deals, we look at backdoor deals, we got a layout, they're right now. What they need is to get the lifeguards, who they have the money for, to come cut the grass out there because they know what I think, right? I mean, another back, three hundred and forty thousand dollars spread across the place, for what? Nobody knows where to go. We need to know where dollars are, the citizens going, that our citizens are putting in the pocket, and we don't know. Nobody explains where this money's going and nobody has to tell nobody from the other states where the money's going. And they tell you, we ain't got to take nothing, and it goes, hey, we're the senator, we're the House representative, we got to take nothing, we don't want it. That's wrong. That might be the law, but it's wrong. I mean, this need to go public one hundred percent all the way. And I guarantee you, I'm going to take it as far as possible. I'm done, go ahead.
All right, thank you, Mr. Blue.
Did you have a question before I was?
With the twenty thousand we had, last year, before that, that was used, had that been spent already?
Yeah, yeah, it was, we, we put in for sixty-seven, we got forty-seven. And it went towards the gym and, and different things, I think we put air conditioners in, and it's twenty off of that.
Anything else? Anything else for administrative support? We'll get you rest over in a little bit. Yes, sir. All right, thank you, thank you, Brad. I thank Mr. Mr. Blue to get us the information we needed. I think I forgot some plans and anybody else that wants to, uh, take up all this, so, uh, we'll get that to us. Up next, recognition of citizens before council. First, we have Ms. Vicki Harris. Just remember, everybody has to read this.
I'll take it.
Okay.
Um, thank you, uh, chairman and members of the council. I just wanted to kind of let you know what the veteran affairs is doing and, uh, what we did was create a little flyer for you guys so that you'll know exactly where we'll be going within the next couple of months, um, until the end of the year. Uh, we have our benefit candidate, which would be June twenty-first, um, and we haven't had anything scheduled in a while for, uh, July the fourth, so, uh, the next year, if God willing, we'll try to put together something for July fourth for the veterans and for the county of Marlborough to show our appreciation for that. Uh, we'll have, uh, a second annual Veterans Friends Day down at Bristle Park. And we got that scheduled potentially for September the eighth, which is a Friday after, um, the Labor Day holiday. Um, and again, it will be at Bristle like we did before, uh, the Do Not Wednesday Stand Down. That's where we have homeless veterans, uh, and their families, uh, with clothing or whatever. We'll even push it hard trying to get that stuff together, um, and that will be in October. And then, of course, in November, we'll have another evening of inner dancing. We'll turn, um, send out invitations this year so that more people can get to work about it. And we had a really great time that actually our speaker spoke very well. And then, um, I think the highlight of the evening was when he took the microphone and began to sing to his wife. And it was just a wonderful time for everybody, the veterans really enjoyed that. And then, um, of course, our activity that is mandated for us to do every November the eleventh. We always have a luncheon and then we have a first parade ever in twenty years. We're going to kind of the first thing to try to do the parade first and then we have to gather for the luncheon after the parade. And that'll kind of give everybody the time to enjoy everything and then come, get their veterans home and go home. Um, I'm very, very appreciative of the position and the things that the Veteran Affairs Office has been accomplishing. I'm waiting for other things to come through. We have been talking to Fayetteville and Columbia about transportation and about some housing for the veterans. And we're listening, we're looking for transitional shelters for them. We also are going to be participating in what's called a pit camp to find out exactly how many homeless veterans and homeless people we have in the county, because that's one of our practices as well. And as we go forward, we ask for your help, um, I'll probably put these in your box so that you can get that. I want to have your time tonight, but I just wanted to make sure that you guys will know that I'm all about transparency in that office. Um, I, I've been told you don't have to, but I do it as courtesy because I'd like for you guys to know. And I thank you again for the time and space, that's all we need. Thank you.
Up next, Mr. John Jefferson.
Ladies, I'm sure you're aware of me. And, uh, I want to open eyes by saying that, uh, truth though can be spoken for a minute. I'm asking you, you allow me to give the most clean truth about me and power now?
You can speak for three minutes.
So, power will overdo the truth, that's what you're saying? Uh, you are power, I'm truth. I'm truth because I own the property, future and soul. You took my property, gave it to everybody. Just yet, I understand, now you believe you understand what I'm talking about. But then you have to you personally, you're the meat person. So, you, you're talking about twenty plus thousand people, you can't. So, they swear they did, I'm not going to let the power of the power of the people. But, you're right about it. You know, you don't know what it's like to just sit around and go somewhere and sow something with you right there. You have an idea what's going to happen? You said a prayer in the name of this meeting. Now, you check your spirits back. I don't even speak, I'm not speaking you personally, this is to the governor's vote, but it's going to check you personally. Take your spirits back and think about what, what happened with me. And it's just, he doesn't sit back and say, you speak, you speak with the spirit. Well, I'm standing here, I don't have a power with you. I don't even vote, I can't even vote you this time. But if I pass something, you have the power to say it. Now, why is that? Why do you feel like a man gave you the power that does? And I'm speaking here from a spiritual status. This is not me speaking, I don't have a power with this. Also, come up here, if I can't find the words to say, speak, you come out. And that's what I'm looking for. Wrong, I'll wait here for you. I have just wanted to invest in myself as you do. So, I ask you, will you go and think about your spirits back? And I just hope, I am, I am from the spirit of nature, God mentioned, not from the God name. That's what I'm speaking, God mentioned. Thank you, I'll be back. I hope you know what it's like, my God.
All right, thank you. Up next, county level.
Hey, um, Mr. Mullen, um, before, uh, I think I, it wasn't him, um, thank you all for the outstanding job. I've been funded, um, and each interview I've been there trying to handle. This was, this was the first, here at Marlborough County, one of the budgets, I think it was more, it was just kind of, it's a job, it was a lot easier, uh, I've got a lot of change, you know, a few. But, uh, this was one of the easier budgets I, I could follow and, and kind of, um, understand. What, um, so the graph, the charts, everything, it was very easy to read and follow. So, I, I, I mean, I'll do that. Um, on the, on the trial end, uh, we all know the school that's ended and, uh, activities and to kids, um, we got one, one of our, um, citizens got a after school program and summer school program and we're planning up in the near, you know, in the near future, so, um, get something, get something to do. But it is so hard for us as a, as a county to find something to keep our kids involved on a daily basis. Um, I know with the Blenheim Gym, um, you know, hopefully we'll put up a lawn and kids can use, you know, use like that. Because, um, the school system, one of our kids used gym as a bunch of doodles, that's what we got, kind of gym and gym. So, hopefully, um, the parent can give more time and, um, let kids go down and play. But, um, we, we have to, uh, because like the recreation always is, is a, um, that it might all. But, um, we, we have to, uh, like the recreation, I would just say, um, that even our, our kids and grandkids, when they come home for the weekend or whatever, you know, my grandkid came over this weekend, you know, that, 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 what, what can we do? But they're in the club, you know, so, hey, hey, we're not clubs, we know that. We, we think I have some kind of activity and good facility for them to enjoy while at home. So, uh, I know that's a big task, and you, 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 I put my recreation out there, that's a, that's a, it's a vision. But, um, if they take vision, time, and, and...
I'd like to thank also, um, our administrator, Angela Moore, on the job, excellent job we all have done. And still is going to kind of help us out, to, uh, have everybody here realize the things that we really need to be pushing toward to accomplish. And, uh, finally, I think we have reached that goal. But it takes work, and also a cooperation, and put it together. Every day is not gonna be sunny, but, uh, we gonna get there. And it's not, we gonna have the ups and downs regardless of what you do, disagreements, but through it all, we prevail. And, uh, we just keep doing what we doing, and I think everything will work out for, for all of our county. Uh, Vicki, uh, we appreciate the thing that you are doing, um, with the veteran administration. You're doing a splendid job, uplifting job. I mean, it's, it's touching to reach out to so many veterans and do the things that you have in mind of doing in Marlboro County. And that's well, that needed, and, uh, I really appreciate what you do too. Okay, Chair, you've done an excellent job, uh, and we appreciate all the things that you have done and the thing that you going to do. You know, we appreciate all that. And, um, just like, uh, you would say, um, kids getting out of school and, um, hoping that some thing to open up where we can, um, keep them busy doing some stuff here in Marlboro County, because we definitely need to occupy their time with something. And, uh, and I'm just hoping that we can start some programs and do something to help them. Because we don't need a whole bunch of children hanging out on the street. When you start hanging on the street, nothing to do is trouble.
It's a struggle.
Yeah, so like the house, and I can't keep it so many.
There you go.
Uh, I wasn't nothing mad happened to nobody, you know, but, but it's, we definitely need to look into trying to do something to help kids in Marlboro County really. And, uh, I don't, I can't think anything else that we can talk about this time. Um... Just keep working, keep working.
All right, I might come in, Ron, on this, aiming for, for a part mark on the budget. And the, uh, council for getting together, um, of these, these difficult decisions we made, cuts and things we could not, um, bring money to this time. Uh, maybe in the future, when we just want money, we'll be able to fund some things that, that we find very, too. But, uh, with the, this, the issue with the state not giving us all our money, um, we have got, I think we gotta get straight, some asking done. Um, I'd say that the, uh, light commission is, is, is getting to be, uh, spirit light fixed, and, um, hopefully we'll have light figure back up within the next couple, at least within the next month, I'm sure. Thank you.
You got anything?
So, uh, yeah, I'm gonna just go straight to, uh, Ms. Vicki. The job that she did, and that you do, the things that you've done, know what else I've done. I just want to know, we really truly appreciate that you're doing what you're doing. I would just ask the job. Um, we will have our annual Fourth of July fireworks. We'll be in Fratton for, uh, the Fourth of July, which I think that's the thirtieth, I think, of, uh, of June, because cities have theirs that's sad in the first. So please tell all the veterans to come out and bring your family out to celebrate the Fourth of July at Wrightsville, Adamsville Park, right? Um, that's gonna be a real good day. We'll try to get a program, something going during the day that we'll be working on to, uh, do some of that, that night. And come dark, someplace around nine, nine fifteen, the fireworks should get started up there. So please tell them to come out. Uh, I'm not gonna go back through what I went through, but it takes money to have our kids to have something to do. And we do not have money if there's another group taking our money from us. And that's something that we need to look at. And here again, never forget about the backdoor deals that they're being cut. Because if you look at Marlboro County, and you go back some years, every department store that we, that's out here, we had in Marlboro County at one point. Why we don't have any of these stores now? Because of backdoor deals that was cut back then, that ran all the department stores out of here, right? Because the money wasn't here. Because of backdoor deals, we doing the same thing now, and everybody scared to say what it is. It's a backdoor deal that they're doing, period.
Um, I just want to say that in the past, you know, none of them had received a lot of money because they didn't own the land, the county didn't own the land in the middle area. And now we do, now we got the building and stuff, and, you know, I just hope that we can kind of catch back up with everything, and, you know, that's my hopes with, with everything, you know? I was kind of disappointed with, you know, nothing came through. You know, and I appreciate Ron sending the letter and all, of course, he tried, you know, and all, but, um, you know, I just want to say in the past, we, you know, lost out a lot of years because of that. And, you know, just want, you know, I've been, probably something's up in here, we can do something. I hope now that we got some money in, if we can see something, you know, so that's all I can say.
So, uh, like everybody else, I appreciate the job of Ron, Angela's young on the budget. Uh, it's, uh, I think down the road, the efficiency that they're working on that budget and trying to do everything they can to fund things, and, and of course, that's like everything that our cuss, we had to make, things good, um. But I think down the road, the whole county and all the citizens is gonna benefit from it. Um, appreciate the job, and appreciate Justice Keepers, all informed, and there's no one that I wish coming up, any issue that comes up for the county. Appreciate the good coverage that Mr. Queen does for us. And, uh, like I said, it's, uh, there are a lot of kids out, some of them out, and, and it's, you know, a lot of times I got run right there. And it's watch on the streets, and it's such a pile on a bicycle at any time. And that's always my concern, I understand, even when I was a mayor of a college, about these kids out on the streets with bicycles and running, doing things that they don't normally do for a lifetime, so, uh, appreciate the job the sheriff does. I mean, anybody that's on the scanner every day of the night, he's out working hard, and people trying to keep everything safe. Uh, you know, it's just, I just appreciate everything he does to help everybody on the county.
All right, and, uh, if, you know, we can go on, you know, and thank everybody again, what they do with the, the awards thing. Well, we do thank everybody for, for what they do, you know, uh, you know, I think this last, last week, last month, first week, the sheriffs we had, since we've had, everyone we've had yet, the double mortification, you know, you've worked hard, you know? And they got that, you know, I call it close, so, you know, work, working hard, so, uh, thank for that, and then we can go. Thank you for coming today with Vicki, for Angela, and Mr. Ron, there's, there's a lot going into these to get the budget, you know? And as Mr. Wood says, whatever it's explained to, like we see, you know, all we can do is grow up from here, you know? All we can do is grow up from here, so, uh, hopefully, uh, and, you know, hopefully the, our legislators are working on that, looking for, doing, do something, do something else, you know? We, we can't stand any more cuts from, from anybody, and we're doing all again to survive, you know? Without burning our taxpayers, you know, we never paid it then one time, we don't want to have to pay it again, so, you know, we just, so we, we do want to, hopefully, uh, that our state sees the need for, to send it back to our local government. I mean, it's, it's very important that, that we can fund these things and, and keep everything moving forward. At a pace in where, uh, you keep helping everybody else, that's the thing, uh, what we're not doing, if we don't try to keep up, if we start falling behind, we're gonna get further and further behind, just like we're going down, so, uh, but, uh, so hopefully, uh, if everybody keep working together, you know, this is a new year to work hard and, 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 and keep pushing up. And that's, that's all we can do, all we can do. All right, Mr. Wood, too often, okay, with that, we have a motion, Mr. Wood?
Motion.
All right, all the favoritists right there.